Twenty last one of the year, where we have all watched the meeting. But my opinion is first time in here for at least again, we have got some...
Yes, that...
We remember some public, I don't know if it's something... Got these house friends make sure they talk into the speakers, make sure they're all on the mic, you turn them off after the meeting. They've had to stop all the people using their hogs. And then we go on to the agenda, personal apologies first.
So we've had apologies from this council's button, going on, love it, ever see. And councillor Giles, who is on other council business in Natalie, attending a meeting of the Norfolk Health and School team over here.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, take away some zoom chest, everyone? Now, thank you. But it's the last meeting, for those who are here, whether...
Chair.
Quick, 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 one, two.
Um, councillor Pique needs to be announced to listen to those members present.
Okay, okay. More planning applications, the first one is four way, as you see, there's fully near enough all the same, but the first one is four way. Now, as the of very often to take through this thing.
Morning, everyone. Um, what I will do, as we have three applications, one after the other, but all for the same thing. So, um, I believe everyone here has looked at these applications previously. So just to begin, what I will do is just have a quick look at what we are looking at in each case, which is, uh, was known as a BET street pub. So, uh, this is part of a wider rollout by BET across the country to replace existing infrastructure with what they are calling the street pubs. Um, so a quick recap, they are structures that have advertising screens on either side. There are digital displays that change every 10 seconds. They allow members to public connect with Wi-Fi, they have provision for charging phones, and there are a few other features as well. Um, as part of our process of assessing needs as we've gone along, we have added a couple of benefits, the main one being that BET has agreed to share environmental information that was collected by the pubs or council use, that has been added on previous applications called these as an additional condition. Uh, so that's just a brief overview of what we are looking at. But going back to this particular application, which is the site adjacent to some of the shops on the Farmstead Road. So the nearest shop unit is the Tesco store, on the opposite side of the road is the Oldie Superstore. This application has been required during a course of determination. Um, so the position for street pubs has been moved to a position that's further away from the edge of the highway. This was done so in the request of our transportation officer, who cited some highway safety concerns given the proximity of signage and other street furniture in the area. So this, this map indicates, this map rather indicates the advised position and distance from the, uh, which is 3.4 meters. It is, in this instance, it's to replace an existing telephone box in the traditional sets, which was just there right on the edge of the highway. You'll note also that there are some cycle sounds, bars, and, uh, we need a shop front, and so that's the Tesco store I mentioned. So, uh, to answer your question, we're using... Uh, I thought I did, no, I'm good. Yeah. Right. So yeah, as I say, the telephone box as it exists now, which is, is a kind of traditional telephone box, something you walk into and have a telephone in it. Um, this view, uh, again, looking off, basically, you can see the oldie entrance, which is kind of the most significant part, other than bust up of the highway here, because cars have to, um, they can't turn right here, uh, to exit or enter the park. But they have to circle it around that, uh, bit further away. This is the view, looking in both directions, so there's the telephone box again, the same bits of street furniture. So, uh, essentially, the hub will be excited a bit further over here. So further away from highways, so it's not quite such a common feature for all users of the road. It's just a similar view, but from the high end of the bus shelter to give you an indication of the existing character of the area, whereby we've got advertising boards on the side of the bus shelter. And a similar view again, which should speak to you, the indication of the proximity of the neighboring superstore. Um, in this view, again, similarly, just to show a more closer view of the proximity to the cycle stands, obviously, on the edge here of the perimeter of the shop front. So, uh, recommendations that both applications are approved with standard conditions and the additional one that I mentioned earlier relates into the sharing of environmental information.
Okay, we move on to questions. Can I just add?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I'm really pleased that they took notice of what we said last time, we've moved it away from the true, obviously, from the government, the party, with it. But a serious question, would the changing of the advert, advert system to 10 second changeover, is it a fade or a sudden change? Because I would imagine a sudden change could provide a visual distraction to motorists.
Just seeing if we can bump, we'll leave this one minute.
Um, we don't have any, uh, we don't have a condition which is requiring one or the other. The advice we've had from Highway Safety, the Highway Authority, is that the, um, conditions that we're recommending here are sufficient to protect highway safety. Uh, the, there is, there are conditions which relate to, uh, the minimum time between changes and also require the images that are displayed to be static rather than moving.
But I know that, um, but my point being is a sudden change of image could provide, uh, sufficient distraction for some people. And, um, if there's a, a time changeover from one instance to another, then that suggests to me that there's a fade rather than a sudden change.
I mean, we could, we could revise, uh, one of our conditions so that it, 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 um, it requires there to be a fade for a certain number of seconds between adverts.
I think that would be a good idea.
Uh, that's a great, so I'll probably do that.
I would like very quick, while we're asking for a slow changeover, if you could make it less distracting to be diagnosed as active, like this, people with epilepsy. Um, you know, whatever. It, because of the way that it demands of attention, it's very detrimental to the immunity and character of the area. Um, and I, I'd really like it, probably what's safe for overturn it, but I think we should miss it as much as we can.
Any other questions? Uh, can I talk to you?
I did, yes. Uh, I want to check my, if we go after the 10 seconds. Uh, well, there's static or, or a moving picture, and I've confessed about it. And why, why, what's the view, what's that, is it moving? When you see a cinema, it's a lot of static pictures, it mellowed more, it creates the illusion of movement. But 10 seconds, and this is relevant to where it's handled or sudden, a sudden change could affect some of that. But also, if it comes from a subliminal matter, that's in terms of the map, it's definitely, it's a lot of times, it's illegal. So are the checks and balances, we're going to check whether they are for 10 seconds. And also, the, uh, the new battle, we've got, say, 876 hours, uh, per unit, 5% of the world's street economy. Uh, is this the city council's free time being sort of being thrown home rather than a push out? Is that part of the view, we get the same then, I can think?
Um, I'll just pick up on the, the conditions, I mean, the, the truth is, with any condition, we are prepared. So, um, we're down to us, if we get complaints about, um, and we are reactive, and enforcement, um, if we get complaints down, that, uh, we will go out and we'll check from quite often, conditions. Just, just to be clear, I think we're talking about two things. There's 10 seconds minimum display time for an advert, so your static image will come up, displayed for 10 seconds, and then it could change to another one. Um, and I think with, perhaps what you're talking about is the 10 seconds displaying to the advert, and then there's the, I think, second part is how it changes from A to B, and that's what the council's having, has a ground where I'm talking about, and this is definitely a mission. That, so you know, there's some flash that's from frames to the grid, um, or, um, and you can get paid for wanting to do that, but we need to do that on kind of highway safety issues, so. Please, and actually, because it creates highway safety, it creates distraction.
If you do the subliminal, so I mean, how do you check, do you check it, I mean, is it all, is it set within that?
Well, as far as, it's, it's not on law, it will be a breach of the condition. But, um, the, 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 the advert would be there for less, for less than 10 seconds. Perhaps, yeah, perhaps they're only important to the way you have the pay. We, we, this committee, this council, work on it, because it can't control the happening of that. That's driven by a set of legislation, that's how it's handled, which is in your, for that council. So whatever they display has to come forward with, um, the standards, it's outside our control. We can come to that, we can control what we're suggesting, which is new to the, the adverts. Um, but we can't, we can't say, you know, just do the advertising, because that's, if you want to say, we direct and that's control. We're, uh, except that, um, the legislation usually, they pass. Um, you did ask a separate question about, um, time for the council, if they'll pass it as it were.
Yeah, so the, um, we, we have noted in the report that there is a suggestion from BET that they would offer some free advertising space to the council. That can't necessarily play into our, um, into our assessment of the case, and we wouldn't be requiring any condition that they, that they give that to us or that they, um, give it to us a specific time of day or anything like that. So we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, um, it, it's, it's something that notable about the application, but it's not something that's anywhere in the balance of what was accepted for that.
Thank you, Chair. And I understand that you were a little frightened, you know, of that. And you were sort of, uh, there's also the notification that if we remove any of the power, we need to use the authority to do the advertising. So there's that condition, are there, do you mean, may this question arise, or do you think this question?
Well, the, the condition is in the report, so there's not another condition about whether any is not included.
Can you hear that, right? Can you hear that, right? Okay. The sound's not as good, a bit close, so it's, it's, it did, yeah, it did. Any more questions? I'll answer to them.
Uh, thank you, Chair, yeah. In relation to, uh, the, uh, 5%, uh, why is it actually in the report if we're going to give it any weight? Because it sounds like an inducement.
Yes, it's, it's simply, no, it's, I mean, it's what the acting publicists have said. It's, um, I mean, there's, we've got often reports that it isn't plan related and surprising exceptions. And we tell you that they're not plan related. Um, if the, if BET wants to promote its council's support, probably separately, that's not to that, but it's not something that, um, you, the hub factor in the way to, in, in the decision.
And so therefore, do you consider it an attempt at inducement?
Um, no. I don't, they're, they're, they're offering it as a, as a, um, I mean, my, my, I'm, I'm, well, I'm inclined to be, it's not something, I'm, I'm, it's not something that you should attach in your work.
Okay. Um, well, it's, uh, it's an advantage to us that you, you've said that, have that question, that always is, and being clear, like inducement.
Can I say?
Picking up a couple of things, I don't actually know, we can dismiss the possibility that it's, uh, an attempt at inducement because, you know, it's a commercial company, they don't give things away unless there's a good reason. But my other question was about subliminal adverts, because if enforcement is responsive to complaints, well, nobody's going to complain about subliminal adverts, because by definition, nobody will know about them. So how do we make sure that it isn't happening? I think we have to, we have to do that, how actually, but I'm not sure how.
Okay, just to come, to go back to the response I gave to councillor Tom's, we can't. It's not, it's not for us to assess whether a subliminal advertising is, is occurring or not. That's for a different enforcing authority. Um, in terms of it breaching the condition, if nobody notices it, then it's not actually causing planning problem. Um, so we probably wouldn't enforce against that. Um, the, the reason, um, for the condition setting out a minimum 10 second display time for the, for the advert is, is a highway safety issue. And that anything quicker than that is, is, is going to be a distraction. As I say, if you don't notice something, it's not a distraction. So, um, we're going to be running for breach of, which, which, which calls distraction. Um, we're, again, we're going to go into some areas that, um, we, um, we as a, a planning authority, um, should not be getting into, there, there are other agencies who enforce what is committed to not to be an advert. Um, the point's that whether or not, um, the actor been mentioning, um, the, the potential for advertising in that agency. I've, I've, I've said, I've, I've said, I think it's not something that you should be weighed to. I mean, whether, whether you as councillors find it offensive that they've done that, it's something that you need to kind of put to one side when you're looking at, um, um, uh, assessments of these applications against planning policy.
Question, that seems to have raised a discussion. Question?
It's a discussion for us.
Okay. Thank you. We move, if there's still more questions, we will move on. I'll move the reputation, it's to the first one, and the second one for that.
So, Chair, just, just, just to be clear, there's two applications, there's an advert application and there's a plan application, um.
Okay, I'll move the first one, second one, thank you. I'll move the second one.
So, uh, that, that was the adverts, and then the planning, yeah?
And the second one for that, thank you. Discussion, can I say?
Good.
Yeah, um, I would argue that subliminal advertising is a breach of condition, because we don't, we don't make conditions about the content, but we do make conditions about the timing. And if that's in breach, then it needs to be enforced. And if it's not us that does the enforcement, then we need to be aim with those other agencies, rather than saying it's not our problem.
The, 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 the reason, the, from our con, our point of view, is that the planning authority in attaching that condition is not to control whether or not something is legally permissible as an advert. And the reason for attaching that condition is because, um, without it, there's a highway safety issue. Um, and that, 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 that is, that is it, that that's, it was technically, it's a subliminal advert which flashes up however many actions in a second would be in breach of it. When you come to enforce conditions, you don't automatically enforce every breach unless there's actually a problem from a planning point of view. I mean, if we found that whatever adverts they were putting up did cause a problem from a planning point of view, then, then, then we need to take the force to action. But, um, as I say, the, the, the reason for the condition on highway safety, um, not to control the legality or otherwise of whatever that, or not.
Can I say? Can I say this?
So just the clarity, and this might mean you're going to hit my, so from a legally permissible perspective, I can't object because I don't think, I don't agree with the excessive energy use, is that correct? Any decision that, that, that is, that you've made as councillors, you have to make in order to develop a plan. Um, so what you, what you can't do is you can't go into areas that are not plan related. So, um, the, the, the content of the adverts, um, and, well, I can't backtrack a bit. There's, there's only really two things that you can look at when you determine an application of adverts in the centre. It's the impact on highway safety and the impact on residential amenity. And, uh, anything beyond those is outside of our remit when determining the application of the advert. So because the, by implication, by and worst to you, is that you can't object because of the amount of energy that the, the adverts are using, because that's not currently to be discussed, we can actually consider on the duty of adverts in the next.
Can I say?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I don't want to label the subliminal advert thing, but basically, if the minimum time for an image to appear is 10 seconds, then if there was any suspicion of subliminal advert, which I doubt very much that it would happen, it's covered under that condition. Because by definition, subliminal advert would have to be less than 10 seconds.
Can I say?
Um, yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I don't have any problem with these units in principle. Um, I think a setting is probably the most important thing for a decision making, if the setting is satisfactory. In terms of, um, subliminal, um, advertising, I think, um, one of the cynical about BET and, and large corporations generally, I don't think it's going to be a problem here. Um, and, um, so on, on balance, um, there's no reason, no planning reason to vote against this. I'm actually pleased that they've offered us some advertising, that would be, uh, that would be useful to us. Um, and I'm, uh, very pleased that we're going to have the data from the environment, the data that's going to be shared. So I'm pleased that they're going to listen to us. So I'll be there before, thank you.
Okay. I should be moved before as well for the same reasons. Uh, maybe I'm really worried about a picture about water splashed up there now again. I'll, I'll let, for our time to be used, as needed, the council, I would, I would agree. But that's beside the point. But the amount of information we're going to get, environmental, uh, information, uh, will help us, uh, football, uh, how many soccer shoes are there, how many car views are there, this will help us to detect transport systems as well or not. So I believe the systems, they're probably in a manner, it's not as soon as pretty, but there's probably be others as well, it would be a good idea. Once they're all picked up, that's what we're going after for long, trying to get bad data, so that we have two places in Nice where we could take public money and a public link. So it would, uh, uh, can I say?
Broadly speaking, I agree with the data, I think that's why I suggested it in the first instance. I think, I'm going to grab a limb here, if this was on my street, I wouldn't be happy. I would feel it would be detrimental to the aesthetic of my own area. And I believe that would be residential amenity. I would do, have we consulted with the residents in these areas about whether they want this in any way? How can we determine whether this is, you know, when we talk about residential amenity, how have we, how have we, how am I meant to make any judgment of that? Am I just?
There's no one who kicked it to, uh, uh.
So no one's objected to it, but they're aware of it, how?
Well, yeah, all, all meant to, uh.
Uh, so the, the full application, so there's two applications here. Full application was, uh, went out with an able consultation, and we received several objections to that on, uh, the grounds listed in, in the report, um, some of which relate to the, the setting, um, and the, the context. Um, the advert application is not consulted on weekly, there's no duty to, to consult neighbours on those applications. Um, and, um, so the, the objections came as a result of the full application with the structure itself. Um, in terms of assessing amenity, that is, that is a, is a judgment call about whether there, there is any, uh, any impact from the proposal that will adversely affect living conditions according to our load policies, which sort of see each and check, um, matters to, you know, ignite, privacy, advert, those sorts of things.
Can I summarize what you've just said from my understanding? So from a legally permissible perspective, right, there's no obligation to ask people whether they feel that their residential amenity would be affected by the advertising, yeah? So we're working very much within the frameworks. I mean, I, I appreciate that, because that's a, I remember training from this whole planning philosophy. But I do find it a little bit, I can't, I can't say it directly, but I don't find, I don't find it comfortable that we're discussing things within a, you know, legally permissible perspective and missing out any aspect of philosophy or morality and draw with dispeni, like. I would, I would be unhappy if this was on my road, I would be an unhappy camper, you know? I wouldn't be surprised if George had against it, bubble down the, you know, the sockets, by the way.
Just, just, just to come, just to come back from that, I mean, um, it would have been apparent to anybody who kind of received the consultation on the, um, structure, that it was part of the application of adverts, I think. Um, those comments that we received in relation to the plan application did also raise issues in, in relation to the adverts as well.
So, just to clarify, both applications have the same information presented. So if you were looking at the full application, you see the same information presented as part of the adverts in the consent application. So there's not a case here where residents wouldn't have been aware of everything that was covered in both applications?
And, and, and just a bit of thought, whilst it's not the most present aspect of planning, it's not the popularity of votes. Um, we don't necessarily judge impact on residential amenity because of, um, the presence or absence of objections. Um, sometimes people will, will raise objections and they're actually, from a planning point of view, that, that the impact of those ones is insufficient to run through reviews or, um, we, we, we've made assessments of, 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 and this is, and presented that assessment in, in the report. Um, we, we feel, not to lie, we still do agree with it. Um, but that's the, the, and it's, it's on the basis of that assessment that we're actually recommending, um, and we agree with it.
Okay, anyone else discuss, can I say?
Okay, just as a member of the parliament, I'm on to go for us. But this has brought huge issues beyond the plan, and I said what I said, but it will separate in morality. Uh, I mean, if a future government was to decide on nationalizing BET, subliminal restrictions might not be used, according to the, but we are planning committee, and that's what we've got to go with. Uh, but there was issues that have been raised, we do need to look into, not the planning committee, as a council. But there was issues that have been raised, we do need to look into, not the planning committee as a council, and I think in the wide public. And consultation is really asked, we shouldn't be asked. But again, if that goes beyond the planning agreement, I understand that, I appreciate, I never want to say that. But I might just go for it purely on the plan. I would want to be looking at all the other issues as well.
Okay, anyone else we should send a group to the group, the group for personal.
Can I just clarify that we're having the condition of failing between adverts, is that with living conditions?
Yeah. Okay, one in five, is that not a way? Well, the first one is the structure. And I'll move that, have we got a segment for that, thank you. All those in plan, please show.
This is in the voting on the planning application.
Yes.
Those members want, or those men are voting in favour, our councillors, Draper, councillors Thomas, councillors Sands, councillors Stewley, councillor Pete.
All against. Abstentions.
Those members abstaining, our councillors Champion and councillor Graham.
That's been agreed, can we move on to advertising, correct? All those in favour, please show.
Councillor Thomas, councillor Driver, councillor Thomas, councillor Sands, councillor Stewley, councillor Pete.
All against.
Councillor Graham against.
Abstentions.
Councillor Champion.
Actually, that's been agreed as well, okay. We'll move on to the second part.
It's like you're like, if you're voting for.
Yes, yeah.
Does it make sense?
Yeah, let's try it.
And just remind members that we do need to consider each application.
Okay, so this is the second application for a BT street hub. The location this time is an area just to the side of the front of Marks and Senses on St Stephen's Street. We, just to note, the plans look slightly different to the ones that you have seen on the applications because it's the Stephen's Street area, as I'm sure you're aware, is part of a scheme of works to modify the layout and make improvements to the highway and the top ground and so on. So what has happened in this instance is that BT have had to work with our own teams to make sure that everyone from councillors' sector doing the work and BT and so on are happy with the location. So the plan here, although it's in the style of the council's own work. It's on the screen, but the city is excited just here again, quite near the highway. And what this shows is other works that will be happening in the near future, shows some cycle parking and some other sort of street work there. Just, this is one of the entrances to Marks and Senses, which is kind of, quite like you described, kind of one of the smaller kind of ones. Sort of weird, I suppose, so the opposite side to Rampart Court Street, if you like. It's a bit easy to show. And so what's happening.
What was the one?
This plan is in the wrong place. Yeah. These pictures are in the wrong place, they have to drop around. Which is, well, that's, this is both of the current view. So in this case, it's replacing what's known as an ST six unit. So what you have with these, the telephone on one side, flip around, you have a poster advertisement that changes as it rolls through, these adverts are illuminated. In terms of the site, it would be possibly here, but obviously the layout of the streets and so on would look a bit different to this because the works that are happening to the wider area are yet to be completed. And so you can kind of see in the picture how far they reached a couple of weeks ago. So this is the same situation as with the other applications whereby we've already got the additional condition relating to sharing of environmental data. And we hear that it's likely that we'd also like to have a condition relating to the failing of the adverts, which ensure that we practice. In terms of highway safety, the revised location that this now, Sixteen has been consulted on, highways are happy with this location. Obviously, the very big key difference with this location compared to the opposite roadside and some other sites that you've looked at is that this is within the very heart of the city centre retail area. So there are numerous reversements and fascists, signs and displays located within shop fronts. So in terms of visual amenity of the area, we think this is an appropriate location. It's also within the city centre conservation area this time, which we have assessed the application against. We don't consider this to be particularly harmful in terms of historic setting of the city. So we, in terms of full application, we're happy with the setting. And we're also happy with the location in terms of highway safety regardless of the reverse. So the recommendation of both instances of these applications are approved.
Okay, Chair, any questions?
A couple of questions. My first question is, how can we determine that this fits with the historical setting of the city? What are answers we use to come to this conclusion?
So the city centre conservation area crazy that is divided into smaller areas, so there was a St Stephen's Street area that carries out the crazy toxic area. So we have assessed the merits of this application against, within this area, it's a local, this is the city centre shopping in UTA area. There aren't any buildings of very radical historical significance. So for example, when we compare this with the previous application, I would say it's green, there was the St Church within a quarter proximity that we had to take into account and modify the way we assess that application. In this instance, we don't have any very key buildings at all or landmarks. It's not going to impact on the setting of the castle, which is probably the nearest key landmark building. So again, it's really in broader context, being within the main retail area, we think this is an appropriate application. It doesn't cause any harm to the historic character of the city centre.
That's good. No, Chair.
So can I just add one thing to that? And just to note that we're comparing the existing situation to proposed situation. We've already got an illuminated advert in broadly the same location, which forms the backdrop of our assessment.
And also it's quite perfect, it's, it's a busy shopping street, there's a lot of other illuminated adverts in this surrounding area, on shop fronts and on bus shelters. So illuminating first, it's not coming from outside to counter to this part of the conservation area. And in other parts, as I was saying, there might be different issues. It's looking at what is there in the way and the complex process and making assessments to change of that attitude of the advert.
Thank you for answering those questions, it's interesting. My second question is in relation, so on previous, a previous application, the, it was moved away from the road. I noticed on the plan that this would be directly adjacent to the new cycle lane, which would be running through the city. If we're going to suggest that these BT hubs would be distracting to drivers and therefore going to move one away from the road, can we therefore justify having one directly adjacent to the cycle lane? Surely by the same logic, it would be distracting to the cyclists?
So the previous application, the reason that it was deemed to be directly to move the structure away from the highway was not to do with, the highway authority was satisfied that it would distract highway users in that location just on its own. The fact that, the reason it was moved further away was because that sign had a right hand turn, no right hand turn into the Aldi car park. And this structure would have obstructed that sign to some extent. And that's why it was moved further away from the highway. The highway authority was satisfied with highway safety and they have a remit to protect all users of the highway, not just drivers. And that formed part of our assessment.
Any other questions, anyone? Okay, we move on to the recommendations to approve, move that, we've got a segment, thank you. We now move on to discussion, discussion. Children's house, just on one of them, if you, if you could maybe show the pictures, so the models from the, now. And on the last application, the picture of the model was already there now. They actually lost, filled with pretty on and bits of paper stuck all over that. And that did bring the highway to end in the area, you know? So it's a really, it's a really worrying condition that they make it all that way or to look after better. Or so they just end up on a bus stop, disgraceful. To put some responsibility on to these people to do it.
I think the short answer is no, because, I mean, they're victims of anti-social behaviour in the same way. And probably you might put a structure in an area in that and sort of posters on it or spray graffiti on it or something like that. I think that would be on to the generalists on them to, to, to invite them to move that to the planning process.
Okay. Also, we've invited them to, so, is there anyone else? Say, move to the group, quick, please, to approve for planning.
Yeah, not wanting to make it sound.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favour, please show.
Sorry, this is a planning application, planning application. So that's councillors Draper, councillor Thomas, councillor Sands, councillor Stewley, councillor Pete.
All those against, please show. Abstentions.
Abstentions, councillor Champion and councillor Graham.
Thank you, that's been approved. We now move on to advertising.
Do you want slightly favour?
Yes, please, yeah. Move on to the group, all those in favour of the advertising, please show.
Councillor Draper, councillor Thomas, councillor Sands, councillor Stewley, councillor Pete.
All those against, please show. Abstentions, please show, thank you.
Abstentions, councillor Champion and councillor Graham.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the third one, and this is a 50 yards up from St Stephen's Street.
Okay, that one, and very much the same situation as the previous application in that the location is within the inner St Stephen's Street where the planning undertaken major works to improve and modify the layouts, the function of the highway. This shows the layout that, again.
That's good.
So this is going to be a jumble, so I just want to show you the plans. No, this is, sorry, this is, this is, I'm sorry, again, jumbled, so, okay, that's the plan. Right, so this, this is the layout that the council are working to to change the driving.
Yeah, this is quite important, the application.
If the, we did begin, yeah. Yeah, correct. So the hub would be located here, this is a pedestrian crossing, this is going to be worked on, always going to be worked on currently. This is the entrance to Chantre Place Shopping Centre, which I think might just be a bit further along. There's a cycle parking going on, that's a bit of, um, landscaping. This shows the current situation, which shows the existing, um, shows the existing kiosk which has another paper advertisement on one side that is illuminated and rolled through and changes every ten seconds or so. And this is the same view, a bit further back, so you can just see the entrance to Chantre Place. And this is the view from the opposite direction, which shows the other side where the telephone is located. What will we have to really, if I was to understand what will be happening here, this is really the view which is by our landscaping, which shows the site. What the hub would in the context of the completed works. And there's a second version of the view that shows it in the context of the streets. So I think this view does the best job of showing you how it would fit in with everything else that's going on. As it was before, we recommend that both the version of the consent and full planning conditions are approved. There is additional condition, which both parties are showing environmental data. So we're going to be able to add a condition relating to the failure of the reversements for this subversion of the applications.
Any questions?
Chair, I think this is kind of fine, the papers are correct. Good side for these.
Yeah, your project, the papers show the plans for two, two seasons, really late, after thirty six, two seasons, they're drawing around. Yeah, as long as members are happy that they've been provided with the information that clarifies that and the family are happy to vote in that basis, then we can continue.
This is that somehow they've got confusion going in the presentation.
Steve, you showed me a telephone, I'll do this. Do you need a telephone?
There isn't, sometimes.
I'll probably just put a telephone on there. The topic you've got put from the beginning.
So yeah, so it's not a telephone, it's not anything you can typically see, so.
It's on the shop.
Yes, I feel that's, it's really that.
So you've got to stay in there with all the items, people, after, all the group.
Looks like it's on the shop.
It's on the shop, the facility is there, is it used?
Because not that you'd have to have a mobile phone in order to use it to gain mobile access to data.
In case it was there, it takes a bit to push from. It's a little bit in contact with those. Might be a, might be a, um, um, extension, yeah. So yeah, it's not, you know, phone, I said we can see, so it's.
Okay, and since it's one of them, everyone's wanting, so. And that's always the same, so.
I can very obviously.
Okay, I'll just one of them.
You can listen to that, because if you say they're going to place in the road, we haven't solved them.
Listening. Any other questions? Now, discussions, anyone? Oh, have it, move recommendations to approve or move that, safety.
Can I make a special?
I just wanna, I just wanna say that I don't see, I appreciate within the parameters of the rules, what we're discussing here, but I don't, I don't see residential amenity being improved by these structures. And I personally, although I don't disagree with highways people, I don't think these improve safety or I don't think they have detriment to safety, you know, I've worked with lots of young people over the years with ADD, you know, and if they're cycling along that road, they see some fancy trainers, poof, bust. And, you know, and I'm not in good conscience, not saying this out loud. I, I do not feel comfortable. So this is why I am abstaining, just so that we're all clear, because I'm not just doing this out of some kind of, you know, objectionable.